The time is now six o'clock. And the Kingsport City Schools Board of Education Regular Business Meeting for October 14th, 2025 is now called to order. Dr. True?
Dr. Fletcher.
You have some special guests for us?
I do. I have two very special guests. I'd like to welcome everyone, whether they're watching us online or here in person, to our board meeting this evening. I do have two very special guests with us from John Adams Elementary, and I'm going to ask them to come and join me now. We have Levi and Parker Kate Henderson. And I'll make sure I get this right. Levi, you are in second grade, is that correct?
Yes.
And Parker Kate, what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarden. So, and I understand you guys are pretty busy people outside of school. You've got a lot of activities going on. Parker, or Levi, if I wasn't at school, if I saw you out somewhere, what would you be doing? What do you like to do when you're not at school?
Baseball.
Baseball. So, you look like, we were saying earlier, you're heading to practice tonight. So, what position do you play?
Shortstop and second.
Shortstop and second. Do you prefer one or the other?
Second.
Second base. Okay. And who's your teacher at school?
Ms. Maddox.
Okay. And Parker Kate, what grade? You're in kindergarten. Okay. And so, what are the things you like to do when you're not at school?
Hmm, dance.
Dance. Very good. And who is your teacher?
Ms. Rutherford.
Ms. Rutherford. And so, what is your, if you had to make, think of the most favorite thing, your most favoritest thing in all the world at school, if you were at school, what would be the one thing you'd like to do most?
Playground.
Playground. That's pretty good. I would agree with that. That's a solid answer. What about you, Levi?
Playground and gym.
Playground and gym. You guys are active people, right? Sounds good. Well, we're thankful that you're here to do the pledge with us tonight. We're going to ask everyone with us in person, if you would please stand. The flag is right over there, guys. Okay, so right here. Come right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you all very much for that. You did a great job. At this time, I will ask for a motion to accept the agenda, which includes the consent agenda. Once the agenda is accepted, the board mutually agrees not to discuss any form of business or item of business, or take any action that has not been accepted for the agenda. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second. Okay. Motion and a second. Cast your votes, please. Okay. Motion is passed. At this time, we'd like to extend a warm welcome to TCAT Elizabethan. We are privileged to have representatives from TCAT Elizabethan here with us tonight to present recognition to Kingsport City Schools, specifically Dobbin's Bennett, and on behalf of Dobbin's Bennett's Career Technical Education Program, to accept the recognition is Ms. Holly Fain, if you'll join us.
Mr. President, thank you so much for allowing us to be here. TCAT Elizabethan is the hub of technical training in our region. Even though we're housing Elizabethan as our main campus, we have 2,500 students across the region in our five service area counties. Sullivan County happens to be that the, when we look at our data by county, we have more students enrolled from Sullivan County than any county out of the five other county, the four other counties that we serve, including Washington, Unicoid, Johnson. So, Sullivan, that's a big deal. Kingsport City is a big deal, because I'm going to give you some stats. So, we started doing dual enrollment with Kingsport City Schools in the fall of 2023. That's now three full school years. We're in that third year. When we started, we just opened the TCAT Kingsport, our Instructional Service Center at the old Sullivan North. We had about 12 students there coming over from Dobbin's Bennett. So, you look two full school years later, currently, and this is a commitment that Kingsport City Schools has made, Kingsport City Schools has committed to making sure that they end their actual student offerings now, that some of the CTE courses that are offered are mandatory dual enrollment courses with TCAT Elizabethan, which opens up the opportunity for students to have that credit, that transferred credit with us that's transcripted, that no one can take away. And we've had tons of students from Kingsport City Schools go into our adult programs to finish their certificates or diplomas. So, currently at Dobbin's Bennett High School, we offer classes embedded in their business program with our Administrative Office Technology, automotive technology, collision repair technology and collision repair, cosmetology, which is new this year, criminal justice, and in our Patient Care Medical Assisting Program, which lines up with all the allied health programs at Dobbin's Bennett High School. Currently on the campus at Dobbin's Bennett, we offer programs to 491 students enrolled at Dobbin's Bennett and CT programs. We also have students that come all the way to our main campus in Elizabethan. We have students that come to our Kingsport Campus, which is much closer. And we also have students that drive and are dropped off at our Boones Creek Campus, because those are the programs they're interested in, including automotive at our campus, building construction technology at Kingsport, off-road diesel technology at Boones Creek. We have some students enrolled in our online nutrition and food service program, and we have students coming to our pipe fitting and plumbing program. Also, over the summer, you had students that came to our Boones Creek Campus and our Kingsport Campus to participate in our programs. We go year-round and we don't stop. So, to have high school students who are willing to give up the two months of summer that they have to come and be involved in career technical education programs is a big deal. So, overall, Kingsport City Schools at this point in time has 515 students dual enrolled with the Tennessee College of Applied Technology. So, we want to say to that, not just congratulations, we'd like to recognize that, but the impact that will have on students as they look at career paths going forward, even if they don't use the dual enrollment credit, the opportunities are there. And it takes that type of innovation to create the workforce needs that we currently have in the region and be a mecca for workforce development. So, congratulations to Kingsport City Schools on that achievement. And now, Ms. Fain, I'm so glad that you're here, because in our allied health programs, we currently have over 220 students enrolled in our allied health programs that are dual enrolled with Kingsport City Schools. So, on behalf of President McMillan, our entire administrative team, we brought a nice contingent tonight to be with us, including Vice President Fink. Bryce is our new site coordinator. He's our onsite administrator at Kingsport Campus. And Casey's with our dual enrollment department. We congratulate you all and thank you all for this partnership. You all are our gold level award winners for Fall for having the most students dual enrolled with TCAT Elizabethan. So, congratulations. And Ms. Fain, if you'll come forward, we'll certainly be happy to give you that banner. If you don't know, they're starting, if you want to show the board, they're starting a little over there on the wall. I was there for a meeting two weeks ago. There's three golds now hanging up. That'll be, this will be the third one hanging on the wall over there in the CT building. So, thank you all for the support of the board. Dr. Hampton, thank you for your support. Thank you for all the folks at Dobbin's Bennett for making this happen and for the opportunities for the students. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can we get a picture?
Yeah. Thank you all very much. I know I speak, and the rest of the board can too, I'm sure, speak to, but we're so appreciative of the partnership that we have, giving every single one of our students the opportunity to find a career path, along with our work-based learning program. It is just amazing, the opportunities that, the hard work that has gone into giving our kids that, those opportunities, from our superintendent that leads the charge with our culture, to Dr. Beau Shadden, the teachers in the classrooms, and you all for your partnership in that. We really appreciate it. And, you know, I've always maintained that, you know, those kids too will stay here, contribute to the community, our tax base, raise families, and it's a wonderful opportunity for those, for those kids. Thank you again. Appreciate it. We'll continue on with our recognitions. Ms. Jackson?
I'm so excited to get to present this recognition this evening, because I was also a contender in the National Merit Scholar Program just a few years ago. So, I would like to recognize six Dobbin's Bennett High School students recently named as National Merit Commended Students in the 71st Annual 2026 National Merit Scholar Program. This program is designed to identify and honor the top high school students in the United States. If you would please come forward and accept your certificate if you're here this evening, and then I will explain a little bit more about the Merit Scholar Program. Jackson Buckley. Benjamin Kulp. Emily Doyle. She'll just stand right up there. Christopher Egan. And Grant Smith. All right. As they stand here, I would like to tell you a little bit more about this program. Approximately 34,000 commended students out of over 1 million PSA test takers throughout the nation are recognized for their exceptional academic promise. These students rank among the top 3% to 5% of students who entered the competition simply by taking the 2024 PSAT, which serves as the initial screening of the program entrance. This, these scholars designees are selected on the base of their skills, accomplishments, and potential for success in their rigorous college studies. So, please, let's recognize these students for their academic achievement and the PSAT for the Merit Scholar Program. Congratulations. Now, we have to get a picture.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. At this time, I'd like to ask Aisha Qatari. Arush Nagre, please come in front. And Jaya Vasiste. At this time, on behalf of the Kingsport City Schools Board of Education, I'd like to recognize these seniors that have been named as semifinalists in the 71st Annual 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program, a program designed to identify and honor the top high school students in the United States. These students will compete with the top high school students in the nation for approximately 6,000 scholarships, national merit scholarships worth more than $26 million. That will be offered in spring 2026. The nationwide pool of semifinalists represents less than 1% of all high school students in the United States and includes the highest PSAT entrance in each state. Merit Scholar designees are selected on the basis of their skills, accomplishments, and potential success in rigorous college studies without regard to gender, race, ethnic origin, or religious preference. To become a finalist, a semifinalist, and his or her high school must submit a detailed scholarship application in which information is provided regarding the semifinalist's academic record, participation in school and/or community activities, demonstrated leadership abilities, employment, and honors and/or awards received. Over 16,000 students out of over a million test takers qualified as semifinalists. Approximately 95% of the semifinalists are expected to advance to the finalists standing in February, and more than half of the finalists will win a National Merit Scholarship, earning the Merit Scholar title. National Merit Scholarship winners will be announced beginning in April and concluding in July 2026. A very proud and congratulations to Aisha Qatari.
I'll take the opportunity to congratulate all 10, our commended and our semifinalists. Most high schools aren't fortunate to have annually one of these recognitions. And to have 10 in a class is quite remarkable. So, and I know how hard each of you have worked and how much support you've received from your family and, and your school family as well. So, congratulations, and we wish you the absolute best, because we know the sky is the limit for, for all 10 of you.
I get the distinct honor tonight to recognize the entire Sevier Middle School staff for being selected as a recipient of the 2025 Resilient School Distinction Award. This is a prestigious recognition presented by the East Tennessee State University honoring the schools that exemplify strong commitments to excellence, innovation, integrity, and advancing resilient practices. This distinction highlights John Sevier Middle School's dedication to implementing school-wide effective practices rooted in vision and core values that foster student engagement. Recognizing schools that inspire throughout action, through action, and lead with purpose, the Resilient School Distinction Award celebrates how Sevier Middle School, the community of Sevier Middle School cultivates environments of hope, courage, and student success by transforming challenges into opportunities, fostering meaningful learning experiences, and serving as a model of resilience in action. They were formally recognized by ETSU on campus September 23rd, 2025, alongside other schools in the state. So, Dr. Loudermilk, you want to come at this? Congratulations. Yeah, everybody.
Congratulations, Dr. Loudermilk, to you and your staff for, on that award. We're going, we're going to give you just a moment. Thank you again for coming. Students, parents, and those of you from TCAT Elizabethan, thank you for coming again. We'll give you a brief minute to dismiss yourselves unless you want to just talk about listen to business. This is the time when members of the audience are invited to comment on agenda items. If approved by the Board Executive Committee, members of the community may also address the board regarding non-agenda items. In order to speak on a topic not included on the agenda, per Board Policy 1.404, you must submit in writing a written request to the Superintendent of Schools at least three business days before the regular meeting. This is not the time to speak about personnel issues, as there are more appropriate ways in which these can be addressed. If you are not sure how to do this, please ask one of the board members after the meeting. In your remarks, you may not refer to students by name without permission from a parent or guardian. Speakers are requested to first state your name and limit your remarks to a maximum of three minutes. Seeing none. Move on to our business items. 6.1. Mr. Frye?
Good evening. Which one we have first, Cora Cox? Couple of items for your consideration tonight to award some, some procurement and construction contracts. First one is the recommendation to award a bid for a secure entrance at Cora Cox Academy. We advertised for bids on September the 6th and opened bids on October the 1st. There were two bids received. The low bid of $68,956 is from Custom Building Group. We've had Kane Rash West, CRW Architects, working on this project. And Katie Hill, architect with that group, has reviewed the bids and recommends moving forward with the, with the low bid from Custom Building Group. We've worked with Custom Building Group. Our maintenance staff has worked with Custom Building Group on several small projects. So, we were familiar with their work and are satisfied that this will be a successful project. I think right now that the project is scheduled to be done over winter break, depending on the delivery of some hardware, such as doors. Some of those things have some pretty lengthy delivery times. So, it's anticipated. They've indicated that they think that the work can be done during that time period. So, it'd be, it could be, and it's, it's not a major project. It's, it's creating a, you know, the secure vegetable entrance into the, into the facility. We had kind of held off on this, not knowing kind of how long we were going to be in that facility. But, right now with the, it's, you know, probably going to be there for another six years or so anyway. So, we just felt that it, this was necessary. And we have the Public School Security Grant that came through. I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 and, let's say it's between $140,000 and $160,000. So, it will cover the cost of this project, and that's where, that's where this will be funded from. Total construction cost with the contingency and architect fees of $67,000, $76,343. And so, we would recommend that the board approve the low bid with Custom Building Group and authorize a contingency of 6% for $4,137.
Is there only one, is there, I don't know if I can ask this or you can tell it. Is there just one entry, one entrance?
There is a back door, but we only use one entrance. I mean, there's an emergency exit at the end of the hallway opposite the entry point, but we, everyone must enter at the same point.
Wait, okay.
And this will, this will secure that, further secure that entry point.
Any questions, concerns, discussion? Okay. The recommended action is to enter into agreement with Custom Building Group Incorporated in the amount of $68,956 and authorize a 6% contingency of $4,137. Is there a motion to accept?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Motion passes.
Second item I have for you is the, is some playground upgrades at Jackson Elementary. We, there are some, couple of pieces of playground equipment at Jackson Elementary that, that are in need of being replaced. And, and there again, it looks like we're going to be in that facility until August of '31. So, children entering kindergarten this year are going to be there for their whole elementary time. So, we felt like it was necessary to go out and replace some of this, a couple of pieces of equipment there that, that needed to be replaced. We're utilizing the Sourcewell contract with Playworld Preferred Incorporated. There are two pieces of equipment with a cost of $60,779.63. And this will be funded out of our annual capital improvement funds and our general purpose school fund budget. So, be happy to answer any questions.
I did want to just talk briefly about this playground structure. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at it, but I did speak with David and Andy True about the fact that it's not wheelchair accessible. And I, I just questioned whether or not we should be investing in a piece of playground equipment that wasn't necessarily accessible to all students. But, after the conversation, the school, you know, will be replaced with a new school, new elementary school with a brand-new playground in the next five to six years. There are currently no students that would be utilizing this playground that need mobility accessibility. So, at this point, we felt like going with a lower price, you know, made a little bit more sense. Of course, as a strong advocate for students with disabilities, I wanted to ask those questions, like, you know, what are we doing? Are we, are we okay to move this forward? Looking at the structure, there is many ways that the children could play on it that might have some slight mobility issues. So, even students that would be in a boot or on crutches, things like that, they would be able to access this, this play structure. I know you guys have looked at it in depth, but I just wanted you to know, I did ask a few questions about that. We did also talk about if we were to have a student at Jackson that would be wheelchair-bound or in some way not able to access this piece of playground equipment, we'd cross that bridge when we came to it. Would we add something? Would we be able to let them play on the other playground? Because at Jackson, there's two playgrounds. So, there was definitely questions that we could ask in the future if these things were to come into place. So, I just wanted to say I did spend a little time asking that, was really pleased with the answers that I got. They had already been talking about these things. It wasn't a new question. So, I was glad to hear that.
Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate that. Anything else? No? All right. The recommended action is to enter into an agreement utilizing Sourcewell, the Sourcewell contract with Playworld Preferred for the playground upgrade for Jackson Elementary School in the amount of $60,779.63. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good evening. Wanted to come to you this evening and specifically highlight an item that we discussed when we approved, when you all approved some policies earlier this year, and that was Policy 3.204. And that is the policy on the threat assessment team. And so, part of that policy, you may remember, has a reporting component to it. And I'll ask Mr. Nash if he wants to come on up and talk a little bit more about the threat assessment process. That's something he works in pretty specifically. But, as part of that reporting requirement in the policy, we are required now by the policy and also by law to provide you a quarterly report on the number of times that we have had to notify a school, the families in a school, that there had been a threat of a significant, kind of a mass disruption. And how many times that occurred, we will come to you with this quarterly. This being the first one, we wanted to kind of highlight it and make sure that if you had any questions... had any questions about the process, Mr. Nash could kind of help that answer too. But the assessment that we go through when there ever is a situation where we ask ourselves, okay, did this meet the criteria for us to notify families based on the law and based on the policy? So you have in your, in the packet, the kind of the first, and this will be the format we'll utilize, we did not have any that rose to the level of notifying families during this first quarter. There were several situations, just as a normal practice, again, that we would assess, the threat assessment team would consider, that we would look at, did it meet the criteria? But we did not have any that met the criteria this quarter. So we're coming to you with this first quarterly report of zero, and also then zero for the year. We'll come back to you on each subsequent quarter with additional information and so that you all have that information. So again, Mr. Nash is here, if you wanted to have any questions about that threat assessment process, or if you wanted to add anything, Mr. Nash?
Would it be helpful if I just kind of give a brief explanation on what that process is? So when a threat does occur, particularly a threat of potentially mass violence against a school, immediately the school is going to take action involving the admin and the SRO and their threat assessment team. And that team has been trained on those situations, and they look at not just the information of the singular event, but they do a deep dive regarding that student and regarding the situation. And it's, this is not a model that we developed, this is a state model that school systems use and we have been trained on. And the threats can range from one, which would be the most significant, to four, the least. And so when they come out of those, it's a one, two, three, or four. And then oftentimes in those actions, even if it's a lesser threat, you know, let's say a child in the heat of the moment made some statements, not intended, not credible at all, but we still take action, we have communication with the parents. It may be that we actually have the SRO and maybe an administrator go to the house and talk to the parents, because these are serious events. And I can tell you, even long before this law was in place, we were basically, we were following all of these processes. We worked jointly with the police department, and these were the steps we were going to take. We really got serious about this following the shooting in Virginia a few years ago. I don't know if you remember, there was a very young student and where a shooting occurred, and so we just take these matters very seriously. So they conduct those threat assessments, that information comes to me directly, and they have that, and so we evaluate every one of those that come in. Unfortunately, for this first quarter, we have had zero that would rise to the level where we would have had to make, that would be a credible threat, deemed credible, and also involving outside law enforcement. And so we've not had any for this quarter.
And those are the two criteria, really, that the law and the policy speak to, credible threat and involving outside law enforcement.
An SRO would not be considered outside law enforcement.
So again, for this first quarterly report, bringing it to you as a business item for acceptance, so we would ask for a vote to accept our report.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Any other discussion, questions? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the report as presented?
Second.
Thank you very much. Dr. True, got some dates?
Yes, so we're coming back to you with the proposed 26-27 school calendar, and as well with that, the 26-27 designated holiday schedule for 12-month employees. This calendar that we're bringing to you is identical to the one we discussed at the work session in September. Again, just to highlight, we would bring staff back as we typically have in the last week of July. Our first day of school for students would be August 3rd, again, staying within that model where we would start the school year, really the first full week of August. That allows us to finish first semester before we get, obviously, to the Christmas holiday. You can see there, we've got various in-service days, we've talked about the fall break occurring the week of October 12th through 16th, which aligns with our football bye week. Again, not just thinking about football, but again, all the students and families that are involved in activities, so that would clear that week, understanding that the 16th would be the bye week. Three days in Thanksgiving, November 25, 6, and 7, we would do abbreviated day on December 18th as the last day of first semester. Two full weeks of winter break with three weekends, which is always the goal, bringing students back then on Tuesday, January 5th. That allows for an in-service day for staff to come back on January 4th. Last week, last full week of March, traditionally has been our spring breaks, that would be March 22nd through 26th. And then we would finish the school year with an abbreviated day on May 19th, allowing us to finish, again, the way the calendar falls this year, it allows us, with Memorial Day being so late, it does actually allow us to finish a full week before Memorial Day this year. Obviously, we would look to see that flip likely for the next calendar, but it does allow us to finish abbreviated day on the 19th of May. So we bring this to you for consideration and our proposed calendar for 26-27, as well as the designated holiday schedule for 12-month employees. Again, that follows our traditional model of the major holidays that we have off, and 12 paid holidays per year, 11 of them designated and one of them floating at the employees' discretion.
Thank you. No discussion? Is there a motion to accept the 26-27 calendar as presented?
Motion to accept.
Thank you. Passes? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will obviously begin communication of this to families and staff, it'll be posted on the website within moments, I would assume, and we'll start getting the word out.
Yeah. I wonder how many reservations are going to be made by midnight for next fall. All right. Dr. Hampton, you have a special presentation for us?
Yes, I'll ask if Ms. Alters would queue up, I'll do an intro before we hit play. One of our strategic plan goals is to recruit and retain high-quality educators. And as we were working on the strategies for what that would look like, especially now when there's such a high level of competition for those high-quality educators. And so, you know, we have often, and understandably, relied on the reputation of our school system, the pay structure of our school system, to help accomplish those goals, not to mention a very robust benefit package that our employees have access to. But in today's market, it's just becoming a little bit more difficult. Number one, fewer people are entering the education field. The pay level, in part in support of, from the state of Tennessee and trying to increase pay across the state, the pay in Northeast Tennessee has become much more competitive than it was at one time. So, you know, we were looking for some innovative ways to get our word out, whether it be through career fairs, or through colleges of education, or through just word of mouth, or our social media channels. We wanted to make sure that the current, the authentic understanding of Kingsport City Schools represents that which we want it to represent. And so, in addition, so this video is a product of that brainstorming. I want to thank Ms. Kinch, you know, I think, thank her often from this seat, but she does remarkable work. She coordinated the efforts for this video. The production side of it, the recording and the production part was conducted by Nick Bowen with supportive, supported comment by Sullivan, or supported content by Sullivan Perry. So it's an incredible video that we will use. I have a plan to meet with colleges of education at our regional schools, will be speaking with at least two universities, residency one and two students, which those are the first and second semester student teachers. And part of what I plan on doing is sharing the video, but then also sharing our, you know, our return on investment booklet that you've all had an opportunity to see. So when I go to those meetings, I will take these and take this. This will be the official unveiling, well, actually, the unofficial unveiling was at a football game a couple of weeks ago, but knowing that that was a very small crowd, we wanted tonight to be an opportunity for us to show it, so those watching from home can see it. And then it will be archived on our YouTube channel for, to be consumed by whoever wants to consume it. And then we will continue with our strategic plan of getting it out to the markets we hope to get it out to. And so I'll, we'll play the video, and then if there's any commentary, we'll entertain it at that time.
In the heart of Northeast Tennessee, Kingsport City Schools is more than a school district. It's a community committed to excellence and driven by possibility. We believe in the power of tradition and the promise of what comes next. From pre-K to graduation and everything in between, Kingsport City Schools is passionate about developing the whole child and preparing students to succeed in life. Here, students grow, educators thrive, and families belong.
Been in Kingsport City Schools for almost 30 years, and I think the thing I think of is its professionalism.
Man, you teach such a variety of students, demographically, culturally, socially, and that's what I love about that, that's what makes us special.
There is a genuine commitment to student success. We have so many resources, so many activities, so many things extracurricular.
Though the CTE health science courses at Daubensbitt High School were critical for me and getting me prepared for my next steps in college. I got certifications that are great resume builders and can help me go into the workforce earlier if I wanted to, so I just felt very blessed to have such a great core foundation of knowledge.
Our top priorities are always academic excellence, career preparedness, and growth for all students. It is important to know Kingsport City Schools has a long history of athletic success, nationally-recognized performing arts programs, and a wide range of opportunities for students to develop and thrive through their interests.
At KCS, there's never a shortage of opportunities for students to demonstrate excellence outside of the classroom. It truly was never a question of what can I do, rather, what will I choose to do? And in making that choice, I learned so much more about myself, my passions, interests, the people I find myself drawn to, and my career.
One thing that stands out to me is the longevity of the teachers. You see consistent faces year after year.
The teachers are nice.
Teachers have always been so supportive.
Our superintendent is unbelievably supportive of me.
I feel supported all the time. There will never be a moment that you don't feel supported.
That's a lot of employees to make feel that special.
All of the resources we have, again, to be successful as an educator are definitely here for us.
Every staff member, every teacher, just poured into the students, they wanted us to succeed. Just having that foundation and having this home that I can come back to is so special, and I just love Kingsport City Schools, and I think that I always will, it's always going to be a piece of me that I get to carry with me.
The thing that keeps that tradition going and that pride going and that excellence, and we're offering all these kids, no matter where they're coming from, a chance to be the best version of themselves.
So a big thanks to everyone who played a role, whether you, whether the individuals being interviewed, certainly, again, I'll mention Ms. Kinch, supportive of Dr. True, Nick, and Sullivan. But more than anything, the people who helped tell the authentic story and who have helped create this story for 100-plus years. And so this is going to be our open invitation to professionals across the region and across the state. If you want a place to grow and develop and be great, Kingsport City Schools is that place for you, and we'd love to hear from you and talk to you.
Thank you, Dr. Hampton. That's, yeah, it's inspiring, really. All right. Dates and times, some important dates coming up. We will have our BOE work session, October 28th, November 3rd at 4:30, we'll have our joint BOE BMA work session. The 7th of November will be our BOE retreat, that Friday. November 11th will be our regular business meeting, and November, excuse me, November 18th will be our work session. We will be in Nashville for our leadership conference and annual convention on the 13th through the 16th, so. Any discussion? Anything else? Did I miss anything? No? Anybody know the volleyball?
Roll truck.
All right.
3-0. It was a pretty convincing win.
Convincing win. Congratulations to the Lady Indians, and now they are 11-0 in the Dome, in their inaugural season, and have not dropped a set at home, which is pretty remarkable. Have not dropped a set at home, so they are the regional champions, and will play at 7 o'clock Thursday in the substate sectional game, with the winner going to Murfreesboro to compete in the state tournament.
Where is that section?
It will be at Daubensbitt. They will host Thursday. The time Dr. takes in, he believes is seven. That makes sense because the team traveling here will travel from, we don't know who the team is yet, but they will be traveling from the Knoxville region. So what a remarkable season, and congratulations to Coach Helvey and her staff. This is her inaugural year as the volleyball coach, and what a year it has been, so.
And district tournament Lady Indian Soccer starts at 7:00 PM at Boone High School, so we've got just enough time to make it over there.
Tennessee High, they play, is that who they play tonight? I think it's Daubensbitt and Tennessee High tonight.
Anything else? We're adjourned. Roll truck.